Superintendent schools at New
I think that we'll have something that will be comparable to the things we saw in Houston when we were down there. Maybe a little bit better.
Thank you very much. A summary statement from Mr. Griffin.
Well, Dr. Poister, of course, I agree with Mr. Wall. I'd be glad to see the time when we, you know, when we can add all these new courses and help the college bound students out, of course, y'all increase the curriculum and we're really appreciative of that. The, but I also really be glad to see the time where we can offer the vocational training to where the students that are not real good in books, but can work with their hands. I think that that will offer them an opportunity to make a good living. I believe that they'll stay in school longer, you'll have less dropouts, and that, uh, that they'll have a better attitude and less trouble in school.
Thank you. Any final comment, Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to say that the vocational end of the school, uh, part here, you know, I very much agree, you know, that it's going to be an exciting part of the school, correct? And I would also like to say at this time that I'd like to welcome you, like to welcome Mr. Wallace to New York. We enjoy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Aiken, any final comment?
Uh, Dr. Poister, I'd, I'd also want to say that we appreciate having such a fine year as we've had so far this year. The morale and attitude of the students, the personnel, and the faculty, administrators, it's, uh, we can get that money that Terry was talking about, the thing is going to be looking up for us.
You know, that's a very timely comment, and I also just to add this, with your permission, we're going to plan some other programs in which we will just zero in on the matter of financing. I think our community might be interested in, you know, how money comes in and, you know, some of the, some of the difficulties, uh, in that we actually get money a year late, really, on the assessment. So, we'll plan some programs in which we'll talk about the, the funding of their school programs, and then, uh, some of the members of the board have mentioned, uh, the improved curriculum and planning and whatever. We'll just, we'll try to get into discussing. I'm pleased to present at this time another member of our administrative team. I think we're fortunate to have Dr. Susan Clark as the elementary principal, and I'd like to call on Dr. Clark at this time to make whatever comments that she would like to make.
Thank you, Dr. Poister. Of course, there are a lot of things that I could say. There are a lot of, there are too many good things to say about New York to, to say in the space of time that we have. Uh, but just generally, let me talk for a few minutes about what I found when I came to New York and where I see the elementary program at New York Gomly. Uh, when I came here, I was very, very pleased to be associated with the faculty because I have found them to be very professional and extremely dedicated. They work together so well, which is a plus for anybody's school to have a group of teachers who, who are eager to work together on educational programs. The other thing that I found were parents who are vitally interested in what goes on in their school, and you don't find that everywhere. I, as an educator, have not found the kind of interest in the school that our parents have and the kind of willingness that our parents have to come to the school and work with us and give us input on the kinds of things that we're doing and, and help us with just about anything we want help with. Uh, the other thing I found were some academic problems who, that are working very well. For instance, our reading problem works very well, and that's a plus in anyone's elementary school. Where I see us going in the future, I made this statement this summer when I was working on some of the teachers here, that New York is an elementary school principal's dream and that there aren't very many places, there are many school districts in Arkansas that can boast the kind of facilities that, that we have. Uh, we're going to be able to do things in New York, in elementary school, that, that other school districts can only dream about. For instance, we'll be able to have a full-time art program for our children, full-time music program for our children. Uh, our media center, our library and media center at the new building will literally become an extension of the regular classroom, in that children who need extra assistance on certain skills can go to the media center and get that help, and children who need, who have already mastered those skills can go to the media center and there'll be a program set up for enrichment for them. So, instead of it just being a library where kids can go check out books, it'll, it'll be an extension of the classroom, where, where learning experiences will be going on there all the time. So, what I see in New York is just absolutely unlimited potential, and it's just very, very exciting for me to be able to be a part of.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Ms. Peggy Warrenall at this time to make whatever comments that she would like to make.
Well, Dr. Poister, I've become very excited when I think about what is happening in New York today. I was born and raised in New York and have taught all but three years here. I've always been proud of New York, but now I find myself especially proud and excited to be a part of the educational system that I find myself to be a part of. We have an administration that is very professional and really to work with us and treat us in a professional way, and it excites us and inspires us to do the very best job that we can do for the children. And now that we have the money to do anything that we want to for the children, each child will be able to reach his potential regardless of what his special problems might be or what his potential is, he'll be able to reach that potential, and that excites me as an educator. And I'm just very proud to be a part of this team, and that's what I consider us to be, is a team working together.
Thank you very much for those comments. Ms. Catherine, I was just thinking a few minutes ago here about a conversation that you and I had several months ago in talking about the potentials that exist for this school and the community, looking at the financial resources and the human resources that, um, that we have, and maybe putting these together for, and building a, a program that is, uh, will help us to reach all the children. Comments would you have with respect to this?
Well, of course, financial assets and unlimited financial resources are a help to any school district, but I feel like one of our most valuable human resources here is the administration that we've been fortunate enough to attract. I taught in several school districts in Arkansas and several school districts from out of the state, and I've never been associated with an administration who is any more professional or any more academically oriented than the administration I'm working with here. The finances, I'm mostly excited about those for the extension of the curriculum that, that we can provide for our students here at New York, um, for our gifted students and our, uh, students with, with special problems. All of our children will benefit greatly from the, the special people we'll be able to hire and the special resources that the classroom teachers will, will have available to them.
Thank you very much. All of your comments just really makes me be also proud, proud to be a part of this fine school and community. As we move toward concluding this portion of the program, I would ask for final comments or summary statements. First, Dr. Clark.
Well, of course, we've all talked about our financial resources and what we're going to be able to do with them, make our school program what we want it to be, what's going to make our school program what we want it to be now that we have the resources, is dedication and hard work. And many, many times when you get involved in planning school programs, uh, there's so much hard work involved, you think to yourself, oh, am I ever going to get there? But our goal in the elementary school, uh, I think I can speak for the elementary faculty, our goal is to make the New York Elementary School a model school, for it to be, for the school program that we designed to be a showplace for the nation, so that people all over this country will want to come to New York Elementary School and see what we have and find out how we got it. We intend to be absolutely the best, and we'll, we'll reach that goal.
Thank you. A final comment, Ms. Warren.
Well, Dr. Poister, I would like to see every parent in New York become as excited as we are, the educational opportunities that are being afforded to our children now and in the future, because when they realize what we can now do for their child, they're going to be very, very proud to be in New York.
Thank you, and we'll conclude this, this segment by a final comment from Ms. Catherine.
Thank you. I believe that we, we have good leadership here to help us with the direction of our financial resources. We have a very professional faculty, we have the leadership and the organization to direct us toward, towards our, the goals which we've set for ourselves. Uh, as a parent, I'm excited for my own child in the district, and I feel that, that the educational opportunities here are just unlimited, and I'm very excited about them for myself and for him and for all of the children.
The maintenance part of school program is a tremendously important part of the program, and I think we're fortunate here at New York in having an outstanding maintenance program, and, uh, Mr. McVeigh has, has, has and is doing just an outstanding job. Mr. Wall, I've heard you comment from time to time about, uh, maintenance programs and your previous experience, and then, and then your comments about the good program, the outstanding program that we have here. Would you make any comment there, please, some?
The, uh, maintenance person is the most important in a lot of respects to the total school program, that the appearance of the school, the attitude of the school is reflected by the person that you have in charge of your maintenance program. Now, I admire the work that Mr. McVeigh does, and I appreciate the cooperation that, that he gives us in keeping our facilities looking good and functioning properly.
Mr. McVeigh, uh, so really the purpose for this part of our program is to just express to you our sincere appreciation for the job that you're doing.
Thanks, sir.
You've seen, uh, you've seen the school change a lot, uh, over the years, and
Yes.
I know that, uh, I know that you're, you're looking forward to new facilities, and is there any comment that you'd like to make at this point?
Well, I don't know, but I'm looking forward to new facilities now, if it's, you know, what we found the other day. If it's all like that, I wouldn't want it.
There's always plenty of problems in, in maintenance, aren't there?
There is always problem in maintenance. New York, uh, old is, actually, it takes a lot more work to keep it up, and new, I have to get the bugs out of it, and it'll be, it'll be a lot better, yes.
You know, this, uh, the ideas that the architect was talking about the other day, design of the, of the new high school, uh, what did you, did you think about some of those ideas that he mentioned?
I thought it was pretty good. What should I say? I'm too, too nearsighted, I mean, to get an overall picture of what he had in mind. I mean, I've got to see it on paper before I can see facialize what it's going to look like or anything like that.
Mr. McVeigh, I've, we've never been in this building, of course, during the extreme cold weather, but do we have particular problems in this building here when it gets on down to freezing temperatures or whatever?
Just particular one?
Uh, yes, the, the, the whole campus.
Oh, the whole campus, yeah. Uh, the science and library, if it gets down by zero weather, we, we do have problems. And, uh, of course, the portable building over there, uh, we will be in there this way.
Yes.
Yeah, but science library is the only one that, uh, well, they're spending their own food and outfit, uh, if it gets down by super weather, uh, that one here, of course, why are they able to keep it warm?
I see. One of the things that I have been concerned about, and I know Mr. Wall has been concerned about, and the board, is, is you have, you have had too much to do trying to, you know, keep up the entire campus, and, but we do have, you know, some part-time, but we have, uh, we have now been able to add an additional person to, to help in this field. Would you be so kind, for our audience's benefit, would you be so kind as to interview this young man, and, uh, I want to welcome him, would you?
Well, this Wallace McDonald, uh, he's like a lot of other people around here, he's a hard worker, he knows what he's doing, he's special to his more or less electronics, but I think he'd be a good man for any part of the, he's born and raised around this community, most everybody knows him, and I'm just proud to welcome him to our staff.
He's given you quite a reputation to live up to there, uh, Wallace.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and, like you said, I have lived here all my life, and, uh, I, you know, I try to do my best and everything, and, uh, I'm glad to be working with you. I say, I've been, he's been here a long time, and he knows what goes on, it's brand-new to me, and I've got quite a good learning to do, I'm sure.
Well, I've been here 25 years, and, and I'm still learning, so.
How many of your children went through school here, Mr.?
Oh, my children finished school here except one, she liked one credit, and, uh, I couldn't keep her in school.
How many children was that?
Eight girls, each one of them had a brother.
I see, I understand.
Has, uh, they were all, all of it's working, it's got good jobs, and, of course, my baby this her last year in college, uh, she's the only one that's been fortunate enough to talk, talk to any of those kids, going off school. She's senior this year, I hope I can find out her.
I, I thought I had met all of your children, and then I meet a new one every, every once in a while, and, uh, I, you know, I'm impressed with, uh, you're fortunate to have the family that you have.
Well, I feel like I'm Richard Rottweiler, and I can miss your Rockefeller.
That's a wise statement, Mr. Wall. Any final comment, uh, Wallace, or any final comment from you?
I'd just like to say that I am proud to be working for this school, and, uh, I do my best, and I hope it's getting out.
Mr. McVeigh, as we close this program, I think you ought to make some comment of some sort. Any final comment from you?
Well, I'm not very good at commenting, and I say I've been here 25 years, there's, there's, you never learn at all, and I don't care how hard you try, there's always something new to learn, and, uh, new ways of doing things, find that out all the time. But I'm, I'm looking forward to getting into the new system, new school, new building. It can't be as bad as these old chairs, really. I think there won't be bugs in it, I know, but, uh, I'm feeling forward to it anyway.
As we move toward concluding this portion of the program, I would ask for final comments or summary statements. This is an important part of this, of this school, and we're appreciative of the contribution that our food service personnel make. All of us are continually striving to look for ways that we can improve food service, and I'm just going to predict that as we grow for the future and as we get our new equipment that we are moving into in the elementary area, that we're just going to see continuous improvement of an already good program. Ms. Catherine, how long have you been with the school district, and, uh, and, uh, would you just make any general comments about your experience with the food service program?
Well, I started in 1975, and I have really enjoyed, enjoyed the children and working with these girls, and everybody seems like they're good.
I appreciate, uh, those comments. Ms. Cheryl, I've only known you for a, a short time, but you've been with the school system.
Nine years, at least about nine years.
How do you feel about those, uh, the experience and about the future of food service, maybe?
Well, it's improving every year. We have lots of challenges, but every year it's making it better, since I started.
Do you enjoy association with the youngsters?
Yes, and, uh, and probably, it's all been real nice.
Thank you. Ms. Birdsong, comments would you have about your experience with the, the food service program?
I really enjoy working with the kids, and I enjoy working with these three ladies, and I'm looking forward to the new school, to get out there and work with the new equipment and to bring better things on with the kids.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Scholfer, you've been with the school system for just, uh, a short time, and would you comment about your experience with the school program?
I am just really pleased that I was hired, and I didn't think I would ever be, but I have really enjoyed it. It means a lot to me to be here.
Thank you very much. You know, like, as we're just on the eve of moving, uh, part of the operation to the new school, I'm just wondering if, if you have seen the equipment, and how does the new, uh, cooking facilities compare with what we now have? Would you just make a comment there, Ms. Catherine?
They're nothing compared to what we've got now, they're going to be much better. I think they're going to be way easier.
Ms. Cheryl, would you agree?
Sure, I'm sure it is.
You have not.
I haven't been out there.
Would you make a comment there?
Uh, it's going to be to where you can prepare the foods the kids like nowadays a lot faster, and we can put it in the warming bins and keep it at room temperature like it's supposed to be kept. It's going to be a lot nicer compared to what we have been working with.
Would you make a comment there?
It's just fascinating to me. I just can't wait to get out there. It's really nice.
Well, thank you all for those, for those comments, and I just appreciate you being part of the program this afternoon. We're visiting this evening with, uh, important people in the New York school system, the secretary, the teachers. We are opening our video program, and, uh, these people have played an important role in helping us to get this program in operation. I'd like to begin with Ms. Griffin. Ms. Griffin, uh, what is your opinion on the video program, what do you see in the future for this program?
Well, I really don't know that much about it yet, but I know it's going to be really great for the school, and I think it'll be very educational, and, uh, I hope that we'll be one of the best programs in the nation, and we'll be one of the first in Arkansas, I think, and, uh, I think that the teachers will benefit greatly from it and the students.
Thank you. Uh, of course, there are few schools that have a program of this nature, and we're more getting into this type of program. Ms. Ward, as our librarian, Ms. Ward, what do you see?
I can see where this could be very beneficial to the teachers in the classroom, to the students. Uh, it can open up many other job opportunities for the students as they get involved in these activities. Um, it's a lot of stuff.
What do you, uh, in our planning for the high school, would you like to mention anything about your thoughts about the new high school, what?
I just think
Library or what's else it say?
The library can, can contain so many things that we have not seen before, um, just, there's so many materials that can be incorporated into the library, that can be beneficial to all of us.
Ms. Barbara, uh, you come in contact with all of the students most every day. What do you think about the student attitude toward the new school? What do you see as far as benefits for the students?
I think there's a lot of good benefits for the students, and I think the, the video program will give the students an opportunity to speak before the public could, and probably, probably wouldn't otherwise, and, uh, I think the new school is going to be really good for the students.
Thank you. Coach Green, what comments would you have?
In our field, in the sports section, it's going to be a tremendous advantage to us. Matter of fact, we've already used it twice this year in basketball to review films of the games that we've had, and the kids can look over it and see their mistakes, and at that time when they're reviewing, of course, it's funny to them to see some of the things that they have done wrong, but, again, it's a, it's a learning and teaching device which is going to be very beneficial not only in athletics, but throughout the whole school.
Thank you. Uh, we're really excited about the opportunities we have to further the school program here at New York. We're excited about the building of the new, new school, the addition of new programs, the vocational opportunities that we're going to have. Uh, just wonder if there might be any additional comment from any of you. Ms. Griffin, if you have anything else you would like to say there?
I'd like to apologize for the way we look today, because this is cowboy day at the school in honor of the homecoming tomorrow night, and, uh, I feel like on any other day we'd have all looked better.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Warren?
Well, I just spoke, so that for so many years we have looked forward to the new school, and it's nearly here, and we're just really thrilled with it.
Ms. Barbara?
I'd just like to say that I think the new school is, is something that everybody's looking forward to, teachers, students, and I think it's really going to be good.
Coach Green?
It's going to be a tremendous advantage to our young kids, especially, again, in the athletic department. I know we've asked for facilities and buildings that is going to exceed probably five, six million dollars, and it's the best that they can have in the state of Arkansas, and the kids, the coaches, and I hope everybody in the community will really be excited about it.
Thank you, and we appreciate very much what you have done with the support that you give to the school. The transportation phase of the school program is surely an important one, and I think we're particularly fortunate to have a group of people that helps us in this area that's not only concerned about, of course, the, keeping the, the buses in good shape, but they're most concerned about the safety of getting our children to school from day to day, and I repeat, they do a real good job. Mr. Davis is, uh, one of the drivers that I guess has a dual role. He drives a, a regular bus, and then he, he makes the, the trips. Mr. Davis, uh, would you tell us about the, the new vehicle that you've been driving, and maybe just how the youngsters feel about this bus, how they like it?
Well, the youngsters really feel great about it there, they're really, oh, they're good.
What sort of equipment is on that tonight?
Well, it has air, power steering, automatic transmission, a diesel motor, uh, I'd be about to.
Mr. Cheryl, uh, would you, would you mention how long you've been driving, and how the, how the children generally, uh, how they generally behave on a bus? Would you make any comments there, please?
Well, I don't know, I've been driving about, about a year.
Well, I've been driving about every year. I haven't had too much trouble. Most of the time I have a little, chairs. Most of the time they know about how far they go without, there's no line.
Does your time vary too much during the one ride or gets?
Not a whole lot, I don't know if it's real bad, it's likely a little bit, maybe a couple, three minutes there, but we never have had any worries. I mean, you know, that's good, we will make it up same time or more.
Yes, sir.
Too much variation there in time schedule, takes like trial.
Mr. Carter Barber also serves a dual role with the, with the school and he, of course, does the, does the maintenance and, of the buses he's the, and then drives as well. Would you make some general comments about maybe what's involved in, in keeping all the buses up and going and just your reaction about, you know, the, the transportation program? Mr. Barber, would you make any comment there?
Buses are all the same, be in real good shape and mostly changing oil and checking tires and going over them pretty regularly to make sure they're in safety shape.
Mr. Magus, I drove, I rode your ride one day and I was amazed at how you, how you were able to turn to so many tight places and get over some small roads and whatnot. Do you, do you worry too much about that car coming around a blind curve or?
Well, not too much, I'm cautious wherever it comes from, blind curves or narrow bridges. Some places on the road, it's, I mean, tight place, no, no meat anymore, but other than that, no problem at all.
Mr. Wall, I'm gonna ask the drivers in a minute if they would have any, if any of them would have any message that they'd like to send home to the parent about, you know, maybe how we can, you know, how we, school people and the parent can work closer together. Would you have any comment generally about the transportation program?
Well, I think I'd like to commend the drivers for the job that they do. They're right on time, of course, they have a schedule of all. I'd like to encourage the students to be on time to cooperate with them. And parents in heaven to see that the children are ready when the bus comes by in the morning. Of course, if the weather gets bad, if rain sets in, it's more important that they be on schedule. So I think we're real fortunate to have the drivers that we have and they do a real good job for us.
Mr. Davis, as I mentioned to you the, the other day, what we'd like to do soon, in fact, we'd like to do it, as Wall and I were talking about it earlier today, if you would, if you will, we'd like to, as soon as tomorrow, maybe start loading some of our children on to give them a view of that bus. Is there any final comment that comes to your mind that you'd like to make about the, the transportation program?
Well, back up on what Mr. Wall said there, I wanna go there. I think it's important that parents back up the drivers and everything on their decision to make on maybe correcting some of the kids, which that really helps a lot if you get the cooperation of parents, you know, to, to back you up. It's hard to, you correct the kid and you go home and mom, dad say, well, he shouldn't have, you know, craked something like that. And answer your question there about, about loading the kids and taking them riding, but just sitting here talking to me, I could be real nice and appraise them or maybe show the bus and hold as much as kids. I mean, that's just my, my comment.
You've got a very good idea.
Yeah, but look to me, I've really, I've really enthused a lot of the kids, maybe people like to see it, maybe, I don't know, it sounds good to me.
It's a very good idea. Mr. Cheryl, would you have any final comment this time?
Nothing more than Jack told her, both mine, you did all the way at home time, we got two or three with the wall, another dragon outside there. Good about being ready out there.
Good. Mr. Barber, do you have any final comment?
I'd just like to brag on the kids that's riding my bus, I think they're a fine group.
Thank you very much. And then finally, Mr. Magus, would you make any final comment?
My kids have all been pretty nice, be on time, you know, get on the bus. No problem that way either.
We appreciate you're all doing the job that you're doing and appreciate your taking part in the program today.